All right. It is five o'clock, so let's call the meeting for the 28th of June to order. Thank you all for attending. Roll call real quick. Steve Ball, it looks like Phoebe is out. Jan Chastain, Chad Huffman, Delphine Jotto, Richard Rogers, Ronald Karens. And I'm David Fischering, and I'm here. Approval of the minutes from the 18th meeting. You guys all have a chance to read them, look at them. No problems?
No problems.
Okay, then I'll entertain a motion to approve.
Make a motion.
All right, thanks, Richard. Thanks, Delphine. All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, all those opposed? All right, minutes are approved. Staff, additions or deletions? Jace, welcome back, by the way.
Thank you.
Yep.
No additions or deletions.
Okay, cool. In that case, we've got two agenda items. We have the Woods Crossing amended plat and Dry Cedar Creek Two initial zoning. And with that, take it away, staff.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. This is an amended preliminary plat application for the Woods Crossing North subdivision, which is located on the eastern side of town. You all probably remember the original preliminary plat application that was brought in front of you last year, and the applicant is proposing some small changes to that previously approved preliminary plat. The project site is approximately 160.71 acres in size and is zoned as R3 medium-density district and B4 neighborhood shopping district with conditions. All of the proposed lots in this application fall within the R3 portion of what is currently two properties. The plat proposes 263 residential lots, whereas the previous plat proposed 287. There is also a 5.42 acre dedicated public park that has not changed. This area was annexed and initially zoned back in 2017. The subdivision did go through a sketch plan review somewhat recently and was approved at the preliminary plat stage at both the Planning Commission and the City Council, formally approved by City Council on October 4th, 2022. Due to the proposed amendments, this is appearing before you again and will also need to go before City Council again. It is worth noting that since the previous preliminary plat is still within that five-year approval timeline, that if this application is hypothetically not approved tonight, the previous preliminary plat would still be valid, and subdivision could still move forward with that plat plan, but we are recommending approval of this application tonight. When reviewing subdivision applications, we do have a list of criteria that we take into consideration. These also would have been reviewed during the previous preliminary plat application, and we find that the reduction of lots does not negatively impact these criteria. These include conformance with the master plan and zoning regulations, the relationship of the development to topography, soils, drainage, flooding, et cetera, availability of water, sewer, stormwater drainage, et cetera, compatibility with the natural environment, wildlife, and vegetation, adjacent streets and traffic flow, including pedestrian access, availability of fire, police, and other emergency services, and impacts on area schools. According to our future land use map in our comprehensive plan, this area is listed as residential mixed density medium and neighborhood center, though the proposed lots are all within the residential mixed density medium designation. The majority of this designation are in areas that are not yet developed, and this provides for a variety of residential types mixed within a neighborhood, including single-family homes, townhomes, duplexes, and triplexes. The proposed subdivision is within the R3 zoning district, which provides an area suitable for single-family homes and duplexes and other compatible uses. The surrounding areas are zoned R1 very-low-density district, R1A large estate district, R2 low-density district, R3A medium-high-density district, and areas outside of city limits. These are the dimensional requirements for lots within the R3 zoning district. All buildings within the subdivision will need to comply with these setback requirements. And then here is the plat itself. For those members of the public that are interested, this is also available in tonight's meeting packet, which is available through our public meetings portal. I know that these can be difficult to read on these screens. This first page mainly consists of the standard plat notes and certificates that we require for all plats. And then the second page has more of the notes and the exhibits of some of the easements and site triangles. And then this third page shows the actual subdivision itself. Again, this is mostly the same as the previously approved preliminary plat, with the major change being the 7.14 acre lot in the southeast corner, which reduces the overall number of residential lots. Page four shows the outlots to the north, which are being reserved for future development, but also the proposed extension of Hill Street to connect to Miami Road. Page five just shows some of the lines and curve data. And then this last page shows the proposed phasing plan, which gives a bit of an idea of the timeline of how the subdivision will be built out. In summary, staff finds that this application is in order and compliant with city subdivision regulations and zoning. Staff recommends the standard conditional approval of the Woods Crossing North amended preliminary plat. I'm happy to take any questions, or if there are any questions for the applicant, they are also here tonight.
I do have a question here. Kind of explain it to me again. Are they, they're not adding 7.1 acres because we've already looked at that. That was before my time. But they've lowered the amount of homes that were in there before.
Correct. They're, the 7.14 acre is essentially taken out of the previously approved preliminary plat, so it's not additional land.
So that was taken out?
Correct.
Okay, so basically, they're decreasing the number of homes in an area?
Correct.
Is that because of the Hill Street being moved around? I kind of remember hearing something about that.
The proposed Hill Street is in the same spot as where the previous preliminary plat had laid it out.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, William. Is the applicant here?
Mr. Chairman, Matt Miles, 1282 West Oak Grove Road. I agree with the staff's report. I'll answer any questions that you might have.
You guys have any questions for Mr. Miles?
I do.
Go ahead, Chad.
William, can you bring up page four of the plat? So when this was before us last time, okay, maybe it's page five.
Page five?
I don't know. Let's go to the next page. There it is, right there. So when you were before us last time, I asked a question about this easement, and you told me it was an irrigation easement. I'm looking at the very top left-hand corner of the houses, and there is a skinny little section on people's backyards at the right, right at the edge of the property line. And my question and my concern is still, I still have a concern. Who's ultimately taking care of that strip of property? The folks who deal with the irrigation or the HOA that you're ultimately developing who takes care of all the rest of the green space?
In reality?
In reality, and then in, yeah, in reality.
Well, the HOA will take care of it.
Okay.
Yeah.
And that's all I was just trying to verify, is make sure somebody was going to deal with the weeds, et cetera, taking care of that strip. So that's the answer I was looking for. Thank you.
You bet.
Go ahead, Ron.
Yeah, I do have one more, but it's, you have a retention pond on 6720 and one over on, ah, I can't remember the name, not Miami, the other one.
Sunnyside?
Sunny?
Yes, Sunnyside.
Sunnyside, yeah.
And there's, are those water retention ponds for the subdivision that, for this?
They're part of the stormwater drainage system.
And all that water that's in that one on 6720, that is all the water table coming up, or is? I'm curious of where all that water came from.
Yeah, when we were, we pulled pit run out of there and used it, we crushed it on-site for base materials, and we'll fill that hole back in above the water level. I think it's to nine feet.
Yeah, yeah.
And put the ground, you know, cover the groundwater back up. There won't be standing water.
I've only lived here for two and a half years, but I didn't think the water table was that high here. I thought it was much lower than that. That was a personal question.
It gets pretty high.
But I had to. Thank you.
As, did the, did any of the actual lots that were plotted before or approved before, the ones that are remaining, so the 263 that are remaining, did any of them change here? Are you changing the sizes of the 263?
I don't believe so. We just cleaned it up by removing those lot lines and changed the phasing plan a little bit.
Okay. Any other questions, guys? No?
One more. The park, is that something that you guys are paying for, not the city? The city's not paying for that park.
It is a regional park, and the city is going to do the improvements in the regional park. The corner that's the detention pond where the standing water issue mentioned, that's our responsibility as the HOA. There's a line around it, but the balance of that is city park.
Okay, even if that takes 20 years to put in a park?
Scott said this later this year already.
No, I was gonna say, my subdivision's been there a lot longer.
No, I don't know what the timeframe will be, but, you know, the city's normally, I can't speak for them, but they're normally pretty proactive about that stuff.
Yeah, I wanted to.
Just to clear the record.
Make sure, maybe, maybe the buyers know that.
Generally, when they hit a reasonable level of buildout to where you got, you got the critical mass and that, we just don't want parks out in the middle of nowhere either. So, once you hit that critical buildout of that area, that you start looking at then implementing the city park. But this secures the land so that that can happen, and the irrigation easements to feed it and all that, so that when the time comes, we can tap our share of water and develop a park at the appropriate time. Probably five-plus years out, just depending on the buildout rate.
We'll talk later.
All right, guys. Mr. Miles, thank you. All right, guys, any other questions for staff before we open it to public comment? No? Okay. In that case, we'll open up the public comment portion of this agenda item for tonight. If there's anybody out there that wants to comment or have a question, sir, please come state your name and address, and please make sure you direct all your comments and questions to us, the commission up here. If you have questions for the applicant, we'll address them.
Thanks. Guy Kelly, 67352 Sunnyside Road, Montrose, Colorado 81401. I'm wondering what's the allowable uses on the seven-acre parcel that the homes have been taken off of?
Was that your only question or comment? Do you have others? We'll get you your answer, but if you have anything else to comment, you've got three minutes.
Yeah, I was wondering about the outlots. Are they within this approved plat so far or beyond it? It's an eight, it's on 80 acres, and I'm not sure what constitutes an outlot.
Okay.
Where are they? What can be built on them? Does their development require further approval, or is the approval process we're going through now sufficient to cover them in the future? And how long, I gather they're being reserved for development. I'm wondering, how long does this approval last on those 80 acres? If it's in perpetuity or has to go through another process at some point down the line? That's it.
Okay.
Just trying to get some clarity on this. Thanks for your presentation.
Sounds good. Thanks, Guy.
Is there somebody I should check in with later?
We'll, no, we'll get your answer before the night's over.
Thank you.
All right. Is anybody else, sir?
Hi, my name is Norm Stevenson, 14, 76720 Road, Montrose, 81401. My question is similar to the previous gentleman. Where is the 80 acres? Is it involved with what we're already dealing with? This is kind of vague to us. And the seven and a quarter acres, I understand you're reducing the number of residential lots by 23. I don't, I don't have a previous plat, a copy of the previous plat, so I can't tell what the difference is on this particular one and the previous one. I guess I'd like to have that clarified. And as a side note, we've often wondered why there was no traffic coming out of this subdivision on the Sunnyside. Instead, it's being put out onto 6720 Road and onto Hill Street. It seemed to me that it would be easier, I mean, I'm not a draftsman, but to run the people out onto Sunnyside, that's already a thoroughfare, instead of 6720 Road, which is maybe three-quarters of a mile long, bordered by stop signs on the north and on the south, and then Hill Street onto Miami, which, as we all know, that travel there is a terrible road. But, anyway, that's my question.
All right, thanks, Norm.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else? Going once, going twice? All right, we'll close the public comment portion. Staff, can you please bring up the slide that has the zoning of the whole project?
The zoning map?
Yep.
Yep.
There we go. And then can you, from that, answer the gentleman's question about what is allowable, and then what portions of this are getting developed and what's included in this plat versus what's not?
Yep, so first of all, the proposed subdivision, which is all the, the single-family lots as well as the 7.14 acre lot, that's all located within the R3 zoning district. Jace pulled up here the allowable uses. So uses by right within that zoning district include single-family homes and duplexes, public utility service facilities, government buildings and facilities, parks and recreation facilities owned or operated by a homeowner association, places of worship, accessory uses, short-term rentals, and family childcare homes. And then conditional uses, which would require a conditional use permit and would have to be approved by the Planning Commission. Those include childcare facilities, skilled nursing and assisted living facilities, multiple family residences, bed and breakfast operations, or schools. And as far as the question about the outlots, the outlots here are being reserved for future development. Any future subdivision, any future proposed subdivision here would require a preliminary plat and eventually a final plat as well. It would have to go before the Planning Commission for approvals. It would have its own hearings. It would be publicly noticed in the same manner as it has been tonight. Preliminary plats are valid for five years. After that five-year time period is up, a applicant has to come back with an amended preliminary plat. It's titled amended preliminary plat. It can be the exact same, but it does need another approval, and then it's good for another five years.
Thanks, William. And I, if you go to, so, Guy, if you, it's hard to see, I know from, even from where you guys are sitting, but the yellow bit there is the R3, okay? So that's the allowed uses that William just mentioned are for anything in that yellow section there in the middle. As far as what this plat's covering, William, can you go to slide seven?
Yeah, so, I'll do that in a second. First of all, this plat, well, it's technically covering the entire property, but the subdivision, the residential lots on this plat are within this southern portion here, roughly where there's that black dividing line, not exactly. The outlots are this northern portion here, abutting Miami Road, so I'll show.
I think slide seven has it. Yeah, there you can see that the development's all in that southern section. And then to, to Norm's question about, at least about the road, you can see there that there is a plan to have the road go, the ones going north and south would hit Sunnyside. It's just that this development isn't connecting to that road yet, so. What else? Let's see. Oh, do you guys happen to have the previous plat just to do a side-by-side, or do we not have that as something that you can pull up?
Yeah, I can pull it up. It is publicly available as well, and I'm happy to send it to anyone who's interested.
And then, Matt, was there anything you wanted to add to any of that? I mean, I think we answered those questions, so, okay.
William, while we're multitasking, let me, let me ask a clarifying question. And Jace, you might just take over since he's busy. William talked about five years, but that means as long as the developer has put in roads, basically built the structure, but let's face it, maybe because of the economy, we don't sell a single lot. As long as he has done his part by developing the property, it could realistically stretch on for 10 years or longer because we don't know what the market truly does. His responsibility to get that five years, or to, what he has to do within that five years is simply put in the roads, put in the sewer, put in the, the structure. Is that accurate?
Yeah, the infrastructure completion, basically, within five years. And I'll look to Scott Murphy, maybe to clarify if I'm missing anything, but that's the key portion, and that's the key responsibility of the developers, is those infrastructure requirements. So as long as those are complete, I'm sure lots might change, you know, the market might change slightly to accommodate maybe larger lots in the future, but if that infrastructure's in, that's, that's kind of the critical key piece for us.
And typically, how it works is, at five years, it'll get reviewed again, the preliminary plat, and get renewed. Ultimately, a developer wouldn't want to go and build a bunch of infrastructure without, they can't build it without the preliminary plat to assure that, once built, they could get a final plat. And so, it's not uncommon. We always joke that Bear Creek is old enough to drink now. It's 21 years old. That was Matt's joke. I can't claim it, but, but it's, you know, it's been renewed five times and redesigned, frankly, you know, like halfway through, it got redesigned because a lot of the standards with drainage and stuff had changed and traffic. And so they, you kind of revisit all of those elements each time, but, you know, in theory, it could stay pretty similar layout, or they could change it with each renewal. They could change it, they could come in next week and change it also if they, if they wanted to do a renewed one, in which case it would still go through the, any changes would go before the Planning Commission hearings and all that again. So it just kind of gives them security on the infrastructure, more or less.
Thank you.
Thanks, Scott.
On this original one, we are going on Sunnyside. Why has that changed?
Say that again?
On this original one, there is another exit. Am I seeing this right? To Sunnyside?
I think that was a pedestrian connection, if I remember it.
Got it. And so that went away?
Yeah, I don't think, I don't think there was a street connection. So yeah, so to answer that question, so Hill Street will be a main north-south thoroughfare. Both Sunnyside and Hill Street classify as minor arterials. If they wanted a connection to Sunnyside, they, they could. It's really dealer's choice on how they lay out their subdivision. With 6700 extension going in, 6720 will really just become a local collector, have a lot lower volume. And so there's really no right or wrong answer there. As long as the intersections are spaced appropriately, you know, Hill Street will become, and more soon, become the more major thoroughfare.
True.
Since you have more north-south traffic. And a lot of developments like kind of a grand entrance or look and feel for their subdivision.
Isn't it based on fire safety as well?
So that, the drivers and fire safety are, you know, not having single points of access for large swaths of a subdivision. So the reason there are both ends on this one is for fire safety, but they could have done that to Sunnyside as well. There's nothing magic that said one side or the other, but they would all, they'll all work. Functionally, the traffic will end up in the same places.
And then lastly, Hillside, this extension that we see on here has to be put in in order for this to happen, correct?
It's part of the phasing plan, so with, their first phase, I think, is in the southwestern corner. If you want to pull, or maybe you can even pull that up, Will.
Thank you.
So this is where the phasing plans come in. So you get into the Hill Street pieces once you start getting to those eastern phases because it'll be serviced by that. If they start in the southwestern corner, they would be serviced by 6720. It is worth mentioning, too, the plat includes obligations for connection of pedestrian facilities down to the existing sidewalk going towards the west down Sunnyside. So, you know, as these areas start coming online, you'd see the sidewalk getting connected so that there's a safe pathway to connect, which connects to 6700, which connects to the rec, you know, kind of into our larger rec trail network.
Thank you.
I have three questions.
Go ahead, Jan, go for it.
I have a thing about egress. I seem to bring it up every meeting. It seems to me like with this population in there, that there's not a whole lot of ways in and out. I see where they are. There's three, three, right? Three ways in and out.
Two right now.
Does that, well, there's one on.
This one here and this here. This, this isn't going anywhere yet.
Well, doesn't, there isn't, it's the same, they said this is supposed to go on and out. The one on Sunnyside is questionable?
There's no access as planned to Sunnyside.
So really, there's only two?
There's two. One to Hill and one to 6720.
I have an issue with that, but that's probably beyond my purview, but it doesn't seem like a lot of access when you have that many people living there.
So these are reviewed by, so the fire department EMS, all review these for access, and they were, they were.
Okay. Seems like a real backup potential, but I think there's a, that whole area is going to be really congested, but that happens to be my own pet peeve, I think, about that area. Anyway, the second question is, and maybe I should have asked Mr. Miles, why, why is it being reduced?
That's a nice question for Mr. Miles.
They're gonna build a church school on that corner.
Oh, wow.
A church school.
Oh, okay. Oh, really?
So, we cleaned it up by removing the lot lines and squaring it up like that, which we didn't have to do, but we figured it would be the cleanest way to do it. We could have just eliminated lot lines, but we decided to come back and do this.
That's the southwest corner?
What's that?
Where is that, the southwest corner to put the church in?
Yeah, that's number three there.
Yeah, I'm looking at that one.
It's the Colorado West Christian Expansion.
Okay. Thank you.
And there's a lot of confusion because, I forget the name, but Glenn Davis's church is going on the corner of the piece of Hill that we just ran through, the other part of Woods Crossing. And I came in here, I think, just two weeks ago, and we changed that preliminary plat around to create that lot for, what's it called? Celebration Church? And that eliminated 40 lots of density there. So that's what's going on, but there are two parochial uses, so to speak, going out there on that master project.
Thank you.
Anything else, Jan? You have one more?
Good question. I thought there was some discussion back, we discussed this before, about B4, not, that there's not going to be a shopping center going in there?
Not on this plat. Not as part of this plat, there's not, we're not dealing with the B4 at all here.
That's what I thought. What's, is that good?
There are portions of the outlots that are, there are portions of the outlots that are zoned B4, but that's not applicable to this preliminary plat, aside from the outlots themselves, but all of the residential lots within this preliminary plat are all located within the R3 zoning district.
Thanks. No further questions?
Thanks, Jan. William, just so we can make sure we pointed out, could you bring up the, the old one? And for those of you that asked the question, you can see that group of lots down in the southwest corner are not now part of the, the new plat, and that's the change. And so it goes, it's going down from 287 to 263, and it's all just down in that corner. All right, thanks, Matt. You guys, any other further discussion? Steve? Nothing? Okay. Guys? Nothing? Okay. Then I would entertain a motion.
I hereby make a motion to recommend to City Council approval of the Woods Crossing North amended preliminary plat application with the following conditions. The approval of this amended plat, preliminary plats, sorry, long day, is expressly conditioned upon city staff ensuring that all policies, regulations, ordinances, and municipal code provisions are met, and that the applicant adequately addresses all of staff's concern prior to the execution of the final plat. The city staff is not authorized by this approval to execute the final plat prior to all conditions being satisfied. The request meets the code criteria based on the evidence and testimony presented at this hearing and in the staff report.
Thanks, Delphine. Do I have a second?
Yes.
Thanks, Ron. Any discussion on the motion, guys, necessary? No? Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. All those opposed? All right, motion passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, staff, agenda item number two. And before, just, I don't know if it's in your staff report, but just because we had the issue with one of these about a month ago, I just want to remind the Planning Commission that, as this is an initial zoning, we do have to leave here with a zoning recommendation. We can't just deny whatever the staff said if we don't like it, okay? So just keep that in mind.
All right, thank you. So for this application, we've received a, application to annex a property into city limits from Real America LLC. This slide here shows the proposed schedule for the annexation hearings. for the annexation hearings. Tonight serves as the zoning hearing, in which you will make a recommendation of zoning to city council, and they will hold their first reading on July 18th. This is a, an approximately 5.06 acre property, which is within the city's urban growth boundary and city water and sewer service areas. The area is urbanizing, and as is required by the state, at least one-sixth of the perimeter borders existing city limits. The property mostly borders R3A zoning to the west, which is the medium-high-density district, and a small amount of R2-low-density district to the north. The applicant is requesting R3A designation for this annexation, which is intended to provide an area suitable for single-family homes, duplexes, and multifamily residences with intermediate overall density. This is an infill annexation that will allow for connection to city utilities. This is the annexation plat that shows the exact boundaries of the property to be annexed. This also shows contiguity to city limits. The property is along Ogden Road, just to the south, and then the canal is just to the west of this property, and then further to the west is the rec center, some business development and connections to city pedestrian and bike paths. This here shows the future land use map, which shows the property as residential mixed density low, which provides primarily for single-family homes, duplexes, or townhomes. As a reminder, it is possible that different sections of our comprehensive plan may conflict, and the document does not serve as a binding document, but rather gives advice for land use decisions. Included here are some applicable goals within the comprehensive plan that support the R3A zoning designation. Land use goal five promotes infill development, promoting higher density and redevelopment of underutilized sites in areas that are accessible by foot, bike, or public transit, such as the recreational trails and the rec center nearby. Our housing goals support encouraging a variety of housing types, tenure, and density to meet the needs of the community, including mixed-density neighborhoods. We also strive to encourage a mix of housing price ranges, providing choices for residences of all incomes and ages. The property is within Growth Area 1. Growth Area 1 mainly consists of areas that are county enclaves surrounded by the city and represent the most cost-efficient areas for the city to grow and promote infill development. So in summary, the property meets the requirements as set by the state for annexation. An annexation agreement has been signed by the applicant, and due to the small size, an impact report will not be required. Staff finds that the proposal is consistent with the public health, safety, and welfare, annexation policies, and the comprehensive plan, and recommends approval of the applicant's request for the R3A zoning designation. That is, that concludes my presentation. The applicant has also provided some slides that he'd like me to share. Mike, if you're ready to present, please step forward, say your name and address, please.
Mike Surack, 8250 Dean Road, Indianapolis. It's good to see you all, good evening. Happy to be here again. William did a good job summarizing what we're doing here. I just wanted to give you a brief reminder of who we are. You know, we're an Indiana-based company, but we've been developing in western Colorado, in the western slope, since 2013. We have projects in Basalt, Glenwood Springs, this is our first in Mont, or this would be our second in Montrose. So, we're happy to say that we are officially underway at residences of Dry Cedar Creek, directly west of here. And we're happy to be underway with construction on that, on that, that development. We are a family-owned, private development, construction, and management company. We manage and own everything that we build. We're the general contractor on everything that we build as well. We like to call ourselves control enthusiasts for that reason. And you can go on with that, William. This is the map again that William already showed. We wanted to just kind of remind a little bit of the history with the site where residents of Dry Cedar Creek is. We did have, you know, neighborhood input meetings with the neighbors to the south of Otter Pond back in early 2002, or 2022. And, you know, we ultimately decided to position those buildings on the north side of Dry Cedar Creek, allowing a buffer area and a part of that open space requirement to be on the south side of the creek. And then, you know, we, I'll show you how there will be, you know, some more buffer zone on this second phase here, too. And as a reminder, residences at Dry Cedar Creek is a mostly affordable housing development with a range of affordability from 30% to 60% of the area median income. There's also six market rate units out of that 60 total. So definitely capturing a good range, you know, meeting demands of, you know, of the city and their growth plans. At the time of that development, the market study came back with 100% occupancy of all rental apartments in the market of, you know, whether it was market rate affordable. So we're really happy to get this project completed, and we should hopefully be opening July or August of next year. That said, when this property that we're here tonight talking about came, came to market, saw it as a great opportunity, obviously being right next door. We can continue into a second phase here. And we've done this in several different projects in the past, and it's been really well-received. And right now, this is obviously the first time we're, we're talking about this project, and it's very preliminary. We do not have any architectural plans. And we're, we're kind of happy with where we're at in the stage, because we'll be able to get some live feedback from renters and prospective, you know, residents of our first phase to know what is really demanded in the market, whether it's, you know, larger footprints, you know, two bedrooms, three bedrooms, what have you. And so, we really had a lot of flexibility with this, with the second phase development, and I'll show you some examples later on of, of other projects we've done. And, you know, obviously, the, the purpose of tonight is to, to see that our permitted use would be allowed, or our proposed use would be allowed. And then, you know, we'll really dive in and get into the granular details of laying the site out. And I just wanted to, yep, we included that, the open space requirement, which is how we, we positioned some of that open space area on the south side of Dry Cedar Creek, and that'll come up on the next slide, I believe. So for this site, the HOA owns, the HOA of Otter Pond owns that blue area. So there's already a buffer between the, that neighborhood there. And at its largest length, I believe it's 125 feet. At its shortest, it's 35 feet. In addition to that, there'll be a setback requirement with our, with any of our buildings, which would be 20 feet, I believe, in the rear. As, as William mentioned, it's a five-acre site, so there'll be a 20, you know, 20% open space requirement, about an acre, which we will be mindful of when we're laying out the site. You can, you can go on. This is just a, just a refresher, you know, this is a project we did in Basalt. We would not intend to do a four-story structure here, but just wanted to give some examples. Continue. Ritchie Reserve, this is actually a senior market rate development that we did in Fishers, Indiana. Again, not saying this is what we planned to do there, but just an option. And ideally, honestly, we would want to have it match, or at least complement what we're doing with the first phase. We don't want to build something that's totally, you know, new design. We think that the product we're doing at the first phase will be really well-received, and, you know, we can make iterations of that thereafter. You can go on. Then, this is another four-story infill development that we did in Fishers, Indiana, but just showing different architectural styles that we've done. Go on. And this is a lower-density product. I'm not saying that this would be our preferred route either, but, you know, if, if there's demand for, you know, kind of a more of a single-family rental style, patio home style, quad, this is a development that we're currently finishing right now in Fort Wayne, Indiana. The downside to this is that we won't be producing, you know, as many units that, you know, the market really clearly needs. And kind of with that, I have gotten a few data points from the housing needs assessment, which it sounds like there's demand for 250 multifamily rental units each year. I forget how many years they said that for, but that's, that's clearly a lot, and for the size of community. And, you know, the really only other rental development that I'm aware of right now that's open and leasing is the Base Camp, which as of today, they're near full with the first building, they opened the 24 units. I guess there's just one unit there left to be rented. The second building, which is another 24 units, is opening up for occupancy next week, and nine of those units are accounted for out of the 24. They'll have two more 24-unit buildings after that. And it sounds like the, I talked to the manager there, and it sounds like they're getting a lot of calls from a wide range of people. With that, too, on, on our, on this proposed development, we're thinking that a market rate would be fitting here. And I'm not talking about a super high-end luxury, you know, high-end finishes and amenity package. I'm talking about sort of that missing middle, the people that make more than 60% AMI, who can't, you know, make too much money to live in our first phase development, but can't necessarily afford a, you know, $2,500 a month apartment or home, especially with where interest rates are for the single-family market. We think that there's just going to be more renters, at least while those rates remain high. Some of those developments I showed you previously are market rate, but we, we build what we think the market needs. And so, that's something that we're just thinking about right now. And again, it's very preliminary. We're going to get into the details later on. That kind of sums it all up, and we're excited to be here. And I feel like I'm almost a part-time resident of Montrose, and not a lot of times I've been here lately. So, it's a great community, and excited to work on this one, too.
Thanks, Mike. Do you guys have any questions for Michael? We got him up here. Chad? Nothing? I, I know you do. Go for it.
I've got a question. No, 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 I want to go after the public.
Okay, all right, go ahead.
What, what was the last time you were here for what other properties?
The last time I was here was in the fall, and I was going through the, I mean, I know we did the discussion.
The planned developments.
That's not that apartment complex that's going on right next to it.
Yes.
Is it?
It is.
Oh, okay.
Next to the rec center, so.
Okay.
And that, I mean, obviously, we love this area because of the rec center.
The rec center, the apartment, and then you guys.
Correct, yeah, yeah. So, and we think, another thing to add, too, is there's, you know, infrastructure going in along Ogden Road. With our project, too, this is a pretty great ideal spot for another phase, with everything that's going on there. Obviously, Walmart, city market, bus stops, the rec center. We love the area.
Is anything? No? No, no, no? Okay. Thanks, Mike. We'll bring you back up if we need to.
Okay.
William, can you tell us what the maximum number of lots would be in that?
Maximum lots or units?
In a space at R3, at R3A?
Uh, well, I have the...
Number of units, that's what I meant, sorry. Sorry, thank you.
Units?
Yes.
So, the theoretical maximum would be 76. Obviously, that's, generally speaking, actually reaching the theoretical maximum is not realistic, but in theory, 76.
Okay. Thank you.
I do appreciate you coming with data, because that report you did was great. So, I appreciate you using the resources from the city. That's pretty awesome.
You guys have any other questions for staff before we open it up to public comment? No? Okay. Then we will open up this agenda item for public comment. Anybody out there? No comments? Really? No comments? All right, John. All right, John. Going once, going twice. Sold. Did you, did you have one? Okay. All right. Then we'll close the public comment portion off of the tonight's agenda item. Go, Chad.
I'll take the podium. So, as a community, we need this housing. As a community, the, the zoning seems very appropriate for the, for the 3A housing zoning that you've chosen. And the fact that it's near the rec center, and it's near Walmart, it's near lots of services, that's wonderful, and we're enthusiastic. So you're, ultimately, the project's going to have my support. Big thumbs up. I'm, my comment is going to relate to the next step, because last time, there was something about the project that I personally did not like. Now, I'm only one of seven, but I didn't like it in my, I just want to reiterate, so maybe we don't repeat a bad situation twice. And ultimately, everybody flowing into Phase 1 of your neighborhood is going to be blocked with the people who are backing out of the parking spaces from building one. And I brought this up last time, and again, I was alone, but it would be nice if there's a clean flow of traffic. As people are coming and going, that as other people are backing out, they don't literally back out to all the people coming into that exact same area. And I know, since you said, nothing's been drawn yet, hey, this is the opportunity to, to make a better flow, that we don't have any interference with, with folks backing out into oncoming traffic. So, just my two cents. Thank you so much, sir.
Thanks, Chad. Anybody else? Comment question?
Question, very directly on, you know, on the zoning decision tonight, but you did, I think, I thought you brought it up in the slides, so I was just going to verify. It's a decision you'll make down the road, but were you saying that, that in terms of the open space, you showed the picture of the buffer where Otter Pond's HOA owns that strip of land, and then you showed, it looked like another sort of preliminary drawing, maybe, that, were you suggesting that you were going to place the open space in the property on, on the southern edge that would also then butt up against that, that HOA owned strip to make a bigger buffer? Was that the implication, or?
Go ahead and come on up, Mike. Yeah, come on up.
That, that is essentially what I was saying. I mean, if that's a concern of the neighbors, then we can provide further buffer and have some, you know, that open space area back there. If it's not a concern, you know, we think that there's already some good buffer there.
Yeah, I guess I was just going to comment that, at least from my perspective, again, sort of my approach for the plans, that, I guess, because in that case, I would take up green space that could be distributed through the property to make a better living experience for the people that are living there. And so, I think that's an issue, you know, you can hash out, of course, in the community or here in the future. But at least from my perspective today, there's no, there's no reason to sacrifice the green space necessarily. It would impact the residents of that property, sort of anticipating.
Yeah.
You know, necessarily just focusing on the buffer.
And that would be our preference, is to, you know, lay out the site with more green space distributed throughout the property.
I would agree with you. Green space that is big enough to actually be useful for kids to play on compared to little bitty green spaces that just are pretty. I love useful.
Yeah, and undeveloped, I think, is the problem there.
Yeah.
And so, again, undeveloped and usable space versus maybe something that's green and usable.
Usable, yeah. That would always be a priority for me also.
Yep.
Something big enough to be useful.
Cheers, guys. Guys, any other questions, concerns, comments?
Quick question.
Go ahead.
Isn't this 55-plus?
The, the current...
The project?
The current project's not, no.
What?
The current project that we're building right now is, is family.
Oh, it is?
Yeah. The Woodgate Trails is 55-plus, or 62 potentially. Yeah, that's a senior development.
Trying to picture the screen space and kids playing on it, so I was interested. Thank you.
All right. Thanks, Mike.
Thank you.
I mean, I don't know if you guys have looked at the housing needs assessment at all, but, yeah, I mean, it's, it's a dire situation. And, and this one happens to be in a, in a spot that, you know, there aren't a lot of undeveloped parcels in town that are close to anything useful if you live in an apartment, and this is definitely one of them, which is super exciting, in my opinion. Any other comments, guys? Okay. In that case, I would entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion.
Thanks, Richard.
I hereby make a motion to recommend the city council approval of the initial zoning request of R3A medium-high-density district. The request meets the code criteria based on the evidence and testimony presented at this hearing and in the staff report. And thank you for doing it.
All right. Do I have a second? Thanks, Jen. Any discussion necessary on the motion? No? Okay. All those in favor? All right. All those opposed? All right, motion passes unanimously. Thanks, Mike.
Thank you very much.
Any other business? William? Jase?
I don't have any other business.
Are you back, are you back to work?
Uh...
Kind of, sort of?
Not fully. Easing in this week and next, and then I'll be back kind of into the mix completely on the 10th of July, I believe, but getting the hang of things. But no, no other business on our end. The housing needs assessment, so it's, it's been finalized. We'll, we'll actually start to get that out more, more or less published into the community here in the coming week or so.
Is that something that you could, when it's, when it's relevant, like tonight's agenda item, actually bring that in? You know, we're bringing in parts of the comp plan and stuff when it's relevant. Bringing that in there as part of your staff report, I think, would be helpful.
Jase, I have a question before you answer.
Yeah.
Maybe they can all come to Montrose Association of Realtors when you're going to present it to the Realtors, and you can all have the information directly?
I, I will be presenting at the Montrose Realtors Association. I don't know that I would want to bring that in, because it's, it's kind of, it's an outside source document with outside data that, you know, everybody does a house...
certainly give relevant information from it, just in dialogue. I'm happy to do that in, in future reports that are similar to this one.
All right. Next meeting?
I have one question, quick question. Where, where's the city at on the re, on the rezoning, on addressing the zoning of the whole...
The future land use?
Pardon me?
The future land use map?
Exactly.
We're, we haven't dove into it yet, so we've got through Phase 1 of the code update process that happened right before I went out on leave. We're looking at Phase 2, kind of ramping that up in the coming, in the coming months, and we'll likely look at that future land use as a component of Phase 2. We haven't, you know, fully brainstormed exactly what the timeline on that looks like. We know it's a critical component. We want it to be representative of true future land use. That being said, going through that process will require quite a bit of outreach, because when you're looking at future land uses, you certainly want to get those residents involved in the decisions being made, whereas in the past, in our current comp plan, that's really more representative of a current land use, current zoning-type map. So a fair bit of outreach will, will take place on that, but we'll likely start that here coming, coming months or, yeah.
Cool. Thanks, Jase. Anything else, Jan?